I thought he did.
I'd like to call order the regular meeting, the Bowling Board of Commissioners for November 7th, 2017, invite you to stand if you choose. We have with us tonight Police Chaplain Joe Cozy, who's going to provide our invocation, followed by Commissioner Denning, who will lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we thank you for this city commission and for the work they do. We ask you to bless this meeting. We ask that you give them wisdom. We ask that you provide safety for them. We ask, Father, that you may grant that they may know your will as they go about leading this great city of Bowling Green. We ask you, Lord, to keep them safe in their work and in their homes. We ask you, Father, to bring comfort to those who have lost family members and loved ones in the days past throughout our great nation. We ask, Father, that you would bring revival back to this nation and that we would be called closer to you. We pray, Father, that we will always be found faithful in doing the work that you have called us to do. We ask you to give us a good meeting, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I want to make a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Denning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Under awards and recognitions, I think Mr. DeFebbe, you have something to bring to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As you know, every two years, we say to our citizens, tell us what we do well and what we need to improve in. And we do that through what is known as a national citizen survey process. This, last time we did it, we did an innovative thing. We used the Internet to get people's opinion. I recently went to the International City Manager Association Conference, and the city of Bowling Green was one of, we competed against 500, 500 other cities and won an award for basically this, to take the, our ability to take the ideas of our citizens and translate those into projects and reality on the ground. Other people got awards for policy programs. We got awards for taking people's ideas and to translate those into things that we do for our citizens. So I was pretty proud, and now you're very proud. And so we compete with 200, I mean, 500 other cities. I want to thank Kim Lancaster, who wrote the actual application to help us compete and win. And I'm something, it's something that we should be very proud of because it shows that we're listening to our people, which is always the reason why we're here.
Great, thank you. Glad that we're able to recognize what we are doing for people in this community. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You have any other awards or recognitions? If you don't mind, I'll just take just a moment to talk about just one other thing that one of our agencies, one of our departments has done for our community. And sometimes they don't get the recognition they deserve because they're so busy working on different things. But back in March of this year, we had a robbery homicide at the La Placita Market on Morgantown Road. It was a particularly heinous, heinous crime. And since that time, the detectives from our department were very active and vigorously investigating that crime. And through the impetus of their investigation, they were able to determine connections with similar crimes in five other states that ended up, will end up being charged in federal court for those interstate violations. And without the hard work of the Bowling Police Department, I don't know that that activity would have been successfully investigated and next given to the prosecution. So I want to thank Chief Hawkins and every member of the Bowling Police Department. That's a tough case, and that they worked hard. And I'm very pleased that you're able to come to good recognition on that. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Any other items? Any other comments from City Manager?
No, Mayor, no executive session tonight.
All right, first item is to approve minutes from our regular meeting on October 17th, 2017.
No move.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Are there any deletions, corrections, or additions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-50.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.48 acre from RE residential estate to LI light industrial located on Bristow Road, presently owned by Luther Daniel Edson, with Michael Burton doing business as Burton's Towing as contract man D.
Second.
By Denning, second by Nash. Is there any further discussion on a second reading of a unanimous recommendation? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of BG, ordinance number BG 2017-51.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2018.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Any further discussion on the second reading of the budget amendment? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-219.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Amanda J. Hamilton and Kristy L. Montgomery to the position of Communications Dispatcher Supervisor in the Police Department.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're here to approve promotions of two people who want to show leadership supervisory skills for our dispatching department. As we all know, it's one of the most difficult job, if not the most hectic job, in the city. And it takes a special person to do that job. Doug is going to put two names before you. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm honored, pleased to be here before you tonight to recommend both Kristy Montgomery and Amanda Hamilton for promotion. Just a brief bit of information on both of them, I think, is, is in order to recognize both of them. Kristy, who has actually worked with us on two separate occasions, born and raised in Lexington, moved to Indiana in the early 90s, came back to Bowling Green, or came to Bowling Green late 90s and with her father's transfer of work, has remained here since then. She's a graduate of Western Kentucky University with a, with a Bachelor's of Arts in Government and Sociology. We initially hired Kristy on July, in July of 2003. She left us for a period of time. I think her husband's in the military at the time and took them away from here. And she returned a year later in May of 2000, she left in May of 2011, returned in May of 2012, rejoined our organization, and has been here ever since. Kristy is a communications training officer, which assists in training new dispatchers. She's also an advanced telecommunications dispatcher, which is, is an advanced position, which speaks to her skill. Amanda, I meant to ask Commissioner Nash if he knows, because Kristy graduated from Union Junior, Senior High School in Modoc, Indiana. Is that a familiar place? Are you familiar with Modoc?
I do know Modoc.
That Kristy graduated from Modoc, or from high school in Modoc?
Anytime we can bring a Hoosier over the river?
Back, back to, back to the fold.
Into Kentucky, into the promised lane, it's a good thing.
I didn't know where Modoc was. I thought you might. So I wanted to check with you on that. Amanda Hamilton moved from California to Kentucky, so we have some world travelers, or at least national travelers. She lives in Glasgow, still lives in Glasgow. She, before becoming a dispatcher, was a certified nurse's aide and enjoys competition in fitness competitions. She obviously is a high school graduate. She also currently attends Sky CTC and is pursuing a degree in business. Amanda is also a communications training officer, which, again, we spoke to, helps train our newer dispatchers, which obviously speaks to her skill level as well. And I'm confident in the skills and the abilities of both of these candidates. And both these candidates are highly respected by their peers, and I confidently recommend both of them for promotion. Thank you. They are here. And I failed to ask them to stand, but since they're here, I'll ask them now, please. Amanda and Kristy?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you again. Appreciate your hard work. Municipal Order 2017-220.
Municipal order approving the career path advancements of Patrick T. Henderson to the position of Operations Technician 3 and David K. Wood to the position of Operations Technician 2 in the Public Works Department.
No move.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash.
Mayor, as, as a way of increasing the skill of our, our employees, we have a career path program in our Public Works Department that allows workers there to enter in at a lower skill level and develop skill and thus receive greater compensation. We have two people who have achieved their way through this career path by studying the various books and having a good work profile. They're not here tonight, but I'd like to acknowledge them, Patrick Henderson and David Wood.
Questions for them as well. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Next is Municipal Order 2017-221.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Angela M. McCarley to the position of Office Associate in the Human Resources and Risk Management Department.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you. We had 156 applications for this position. Of that 50 were selected initially to proceed in the process for testing. 19 showed up for the test that we gave to help determine their skill set. We interviewed nine, and from the distillation, Michael and I are proud to recommend Angela McCarley for the position that works primarily in Mike's office. Ms. Car, McCarley is here today and has the requisite skills. If you have any question, Michael is also here.
Marley is here. Denning, so that we can recognize you. Congratulations. We look forward to your hard work. And I don't know if she gets extra pay for having to work with Mike or not, but we'll, we'll consider that. Bonus enough.
Mercy.
All right, any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you much. Look forward to your work. Municipal Order 2017-222.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Roddy Grimes and Jim Ed Holland to the Contractors Licensing Board.
Second.
By Denning, second by Williams. This is a reappointment through request of the Contractors Licensing Board, who's represented tonight by Holly, their office manager. We appreciate their hard work. Are there any comments or questions for them? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you very much. Municipal Order 2017-223.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Huda Melkey to the Human Rights Commission.
No move.
Second. By Paragon, second by Nash. This is replacing Dan Rudolph, who had his term had expired. We're ready to bring on Ms. Melkey, who brings a significant body of knowledge from her work with another organization in their compliance area. So we're excited for her. Are there any comments or questions?
Excellent choice.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-224.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Eric Walker and Rick Wilson and the appointment of Sue Paragon to serve on the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated Board of Directors and authorizing the submission of reappointments and reap, and appointment to Warren County Judge Executive.
No move. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Again, this was a reappointment of some experienced ITA people and the replacement of former City Commissioner Melinda Hill, who is unable to return for the meeting. So we're happy that Sue is able to step into that role. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Work on these. Municipal Order 2017-202.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-29 for extrication equipment for the fire department from Findlay Fire Equipment of McConnellsville, Ohio, in the amount of $34,306.
No move.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. In this year's budget, we put the first, what will be a two-year replacement of one of our more important pieces of fire equipment. We would probably call it the jaws of life, but it's probably named something else today, extrication equipment. I went out to bid. We had three bidders, and the lowest bidder was Findlay Fire. Jason is here, if you have any questions. We are planning to work with our partners at the Med Center to look at the contract that governs this and try to make some improvements in that relationship and governing document. But we want to come tonight and ask you to approve this because we need the equipment and it serves us. Jason's here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
How many of these do we, do we have, Jason?
We have equipment on, we have, as you know, we have six.
Jason, come on, please.
As you know, we have six fire stations. Some stations have multiple apparatus in that, but we keep extrication equipment on at least one of those apparatus in each of those districts so that we can respond quickly with the equipment needed.
Oh, we're just replacing one at a time?
That's, that's correct. The, the equipment is aging. Roughly around eight years old is our, is our newest piece of extrication equipment. Now, we have, there's battery-powered hydraulic equipment available. Traditionally, we've used gasoline-powered. So we're going to begin trying to transition over to battery-powered hydraulic equipment, so.
Just one other question. What, what becomes of the existing equipment? Do we find a place to?
We'll evaluate its usefulness. As I said, we have multiple apparatus in, in a couple of the stations. We may transition where both apparatus have some extrication capabilities. Otherwise, we'll liquidate the equipment through Gov. deals or whatever means are available.
Call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-225.
Municipal order approving and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2017-71 for Lampkin Park improvements related to spray ground construction from Gis Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $481,000, and further authorizing the direct purchase of controls and equipment for, from Recreonics of Louisville, Kentucky, in the amount of $152,535 for a total cost of $633,535.
No move.
Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
As I mentioned early, earlier, one of the reasons we got a national award is this commission and staff's ability to ask our citizens what they need to take that articulation, make a project out of, and finish the project. One of the areas of achievement that was, that has been translated and put into action, as we all know, is the comprehensive plan in park and rec department. I think we all went to two ribbon cuttings recently for soccer fields. We're here tonight to ask your approval on a much-needed project at Lampkin Park to provide what we believe is an equilibrium of services throughout the community. I'm going to ask Brent to come up because I, I think it's important to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what it costs. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Mayor Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight and with this recommendation in front of you. I think if you don't, if you allow me just to bring up a photo, I was kind of, kind of the photo guy with these projects to at least show you where we're, what we're going to be looking at. Appreciate Mr. DeFebbe's comments prior, prior to, because I believe he's exactly right. I think, I'd like to think these, these type of projects speak to why we, this, the city was considered and ultimately won that award that Mr. DeFebbe mentioned earlier. This came from the 2015 master plan that was approved by this board. And it is something that I have a great part of my job is being able to do things that improve the quality of life for our citizens. And I, in my opinion, this is, all of our projects, we're proud of. This one, I think, is a unique project, and I think it's going to make a, once again, a, not more of an impact than others, just as much or, or more. I'll put it that way. It's, it's for those individuals that live near Lampkin Park, can get to Lampkin Park, will enjoy Lampkin Park, and I think it will reintroduce Lampkin Park to the next generation of our community. With that said, I'll kind of speak to the, what you're looking at. The project itself, the spray ground, if you can follow the cursor, the spray ground is roughly the exact same size of Circus Square. The same amount of jets, be very similar in that it's going to be ground level, nothing above the ground. It will have a, a fence around the perimeter of the spray park only. That is by code for the state. Since we put in Circus Square, that's a new code that the, the state has. After that, it is really concrete sidewalks, a concrete patio, and a parking lot with, with two lights in it, and that is roughly it. It's, the project is directly across the, an existing parking lot where the, the playground is at, which is very much at the top right there. Bathrooms are here. I cover a pavilion shelter there. So it'll fit in, nestle in our existing structures. And once again, we're proud to be here to at least to, to present this in front of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Comments or questions?
Spray ground. I hope I'm not the only one to get this question in their mind. What is a spray ground?
It's not a pool, I'll put it that way. It's no pond of, of water. It is, the water actually will go back into the ground. It's, it's jets that, that have a, that spray the, the water in the air. It'll be synchronized, just like Circus Square. It's a, it'll be no ponding of water. There's no lifeguard necessary to, to be at this, at this site.
Will this be lit?
Will be lit, yes.
What are the hours projected that this will be?
It'll be exactly like Circus Square in the evening time, around eight o'clock. It would shut down. Part of that will be on use as well, you know, maybe longer days in the summer months. But typically, it'll match kind of the pool season, Memorial to Labor Day. Circus Square goes a little bit longer than Labor Day, and we'll probably do the same here. But we'll let the use kind of dictate that a little bit, too. But our goal is at the very least Memorial to Labor Day and roughly probably throughout the, the end of September at the very least.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Congratulations. It's going to be a great piece.
It's going to be a, once again.
I think it'll be a huge asset.
We're proud of it, obviously. So we appreciate the board and, and the mayor's support, and of course, Mr. DeFebbe's continued support as well.
I did.
Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Appreciate it. Municipal Order 2017-226.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-31 for police department ammunition from Vance Outdoors Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio, Bud's Police Supply of Lexington, Kentucky, and Kessler Police Supply Incorporated of Jeffersonville, Indiana, in the total amount of $39,962.96.
Second by Denning, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. We went out, the, the city uses a, a good amount. I don't know if that's a good word. Uses, uses much ammunition for training our officers. We have five types of ammo we bid. Three involve the handgun that the officer would use on, on, on his shift, as well as AR-15 ammo and 308 ammo that I think is used by the special SWAT team. We divided the bid into the lowest bid for each type. It resulted in three different companies sharing the bid. And those are, is Katie Redd, Bud's, Kissler, and Vance Outdoor. I think there are three that bid last year. Doug, if you or if you would like him to spout forth on ammo?
Let me ask you a couple of questions. I promised these guys I wasn't going to ask anything, but I've got to ask this.
Sir.
How many guns do we have on our police officers out there? This own, well, police officers?
We have three guns assigned per officer. We have a primary weapon. We have a secondary weapon, which some would refer to as a backup weapon. And then we have a rifle. So those three weapons, every officer has one available to them. And then we have a couple of extra, so.
That's my question, and you know what I'm getting at. And I'm not trying to backdoor anybody or anything. So that police officer can have three separate guns that require three separate ammunition on him, on her?
That is a correct statement, yes.
Have we ever considered, I got to say it, and I hadn't thought about it until now, Kentucky State Police, everybody's got the same gun, everybody's got the same ammunition. There's no three different guns and three different ammunitions. Have we ever considered going to a specified gun for all our officers that we all have to give one ammunition?
I, I like my friends over at the Kentucky State Police, but we will differ in our assessment of what is most effective in terms of ammunition and weapons. Our primary weapon is a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P 40 caliber. We believe the 40 caliber, after doing quite a bit of testing, is the most effective single-shot handgun round that there is available. There are some really good nine-millimeter and 45 versions. However, when you take into consideration the totality of the ability to shoot that weapon and the effectiveness of a 40 caliber round, for most shooters, the 40 caliber is the right round to shoot, both in the ability to handle the weapon and the accuracy of the round and the effectiveness of the round if you have to use it.
Yeah. And, and I understand that. I'm not trying to compare weapons or anything with state police. I am just trying to say, if 40 caliber is your weapon, everybody has a 40 caliber. If, has, don't have a 40 caliber, and others have a 45 or 40, whatever. Everybody has the same caliber weapon that requires the same caliber ammunition. I'm not trying to compare.
No, no, I understand. Effective, effectively, that's what we do. However, with our particularly small officers, the 40 caliber and the size of the frame of the gun is sometimes a little unwieldy. And so we accommodate the smaller-handed shooters by providing them with a nine-millimeter version of that weapon. We currently do not issue a 45 caliber version of that weapon, but we are prepared to. But I will say, the 40 caliber is the issued weapon. If, if the shooter, if the individual officer has a, has a problem with their performance, meaning they can't shoot that gun as well, we will try them on the nine-millimeter and/or the 45. But it is based on their performance in shooting the 40 caliber. So the 40 is the, the weapon of choice. Ninety-nine percent of the weapons we issue are 40 caliber in that Smith &amp; Wesson gun. So we do have a standardized caliber. We do have a standardized weapon that we issue. That does not apply to the secondary because it's a nine-millimeter because we want a much smaller frame, a much more compact weapon. You can't get what we need in terms of size, in terms of all of that with a 40 caliber or a 45. You have to go to that nine-millimeter to get what we need in that concealable secondary weapon. Of course, in the rifles, we are standardized in a 223 for all patrol rifles. And then we are standardized in a 30- are standardized in a .308 for all of our sniper rifles. So there is a standardization across the board with every weapon. There is some accommodation made for the handgun on the primary weapon if the shooter requires it.
I understand that.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-227.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-02 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $229,284.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. Since item 12 and 13 and the same family, I would ask Greg Meredith to come up and handle your questions. But again, these speak to your ability to take needs and create finished products in terms of sidewalk, our sidewalk program in the community, as well as our paving program. And this is a sub-program within our paving as it helps to harden intersections that we use a lot. For example, down by the chamber, we tried to harden that intersection. It could take a lot of traffic. But Greg, could you explain items 12 and 13? They'll be separate votes, but maybe you can explain both to the commission, please.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. DeFebo, Mayor Commissioners. The sidewalk programmed projects that are presented today are part of the program for FY18. Again, this is the Logan and Hogel Drive sets of sidewalk projects. As you can see, there were five bidders. Gist Construction out of Columbia was the low bid. This is basically in the area of Cabell Drive near Ogden Park. These two, one, the project for Hogel goes actually from Chestnut over to Cabell, and the Logan project comes from up on top of the hill down toward the bypass, just past Ogden Park again. So this is a continuation of our FY18 sidewalk project. The next, if we're going to move on to the next, the concrete intersection project is listed for approximately five intersections along Center Street that are existing concrete intersections. As you know, we've talked about several times here at the commission meeting that the condition of our roadways is really important. Concrete intersections are unique in that they take a lot of turning and twisting traffic. They tend to wear out quicker than other sections, so we've chosen to replace the existing concrete that's in poor condition due to street cuts, due to wear and tear, due to the concrete breaking and cracking over time with concrete. So that's going to be done by Charles Dewey's Construction. Again, we had six bidders. That work will be done half and half, so half the intersection will be under construction, half will be open, and we think this will provide a better long-term solution to those intersections along Center Street.
Comments or questions for me? First vote is on the sidewalk construction program at Logan and Hogel. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $229,284.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. Since item 12 and 13 and the same family, I would ask Greg Meredith to come up and handle your questions. But again, these speak to your ability to take needs and create finished projects in terms of sidewalk, our sidewalk program in the community, as well as our paving program. And this is a sub-program within our paving as it helps to harden intersections that we use a lot. For example, down by the chamber, we tried to harden that intersection. It could take a lot of traffic. But Greg, could you explain item 12 and 13? They'll be separate votes, but maybe you can explain both to the commission, please.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. DeFebo, Mayor Commissioners. The sidewalk program projects that are presented today are part of the program for FY18. Again, this is the Logan and Hogel Drive sets of sidewalk projects. As you can see, there were five bidders. Gist Construction out of Columbia was the low bid. This is basically in the area of Cabell Drive near Ogden Park. These two, one, the project for Hogel goes actually from Chestnut over to Cabell, and the Logan project comes from up on top of the hill down toward the bypass, just past Ogden Park again. So this is a continuation of our FY18 sidewalk project. The next, if we're going to move on to the next, the concrete intersection project is listed for approximately five intersections along Center Street that are existing concrete intersections. As you know, we've talked about several times here at the commission meeting that the condition of our roadways is really important. Concrete intersections are unique in that they take a lot of turning and twisting traffic. They tend to wear out quicker than other sections, so we've chosen to replace the existing concrete that's in poor condition due to street cuts, due to wear and tear, due to the concrete breaking and cracking over time with concrete. So that's going to be done by Charles Dewey's Construction. Again, we had six bidders. That work will be done half and half, so half the intersection will be under construction, half will be open, and we think this will provide a better long-term solution to those intersections along Center Street.
Comments or questions for me? First vote is on the sidewalk construction program at Logan and Hogel. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for rehabilitation of Center Street intersections from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $229,284.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-228.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-32 for the sidewalk construction program at Logan Way and Hogel Drive from Gist Construction Incorporated of Columbia, Kentucky, in the amount of $201,280.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Paragon. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Meredith. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
So I hopefully have that guts next year, if you know what I mean. So, but if you don't mind, pass the Fairness Act. I know you probably won't do it, we'll probably have to wait until you get out of office, so, so be it. But Bowling Green is going to have a fairness ordinance. It just, it's going to take a minute. If you don't do it, the next people will. So, um, so think about the scam department. Think about helping people who are scammed in this area, and think about passing the Fairness Act. Because all of you could help people in the holidays and stuff like that. And in the holidays, people will be scammed every day because people would be desperate to buy gifts and stuff like that, and they will try to break the law to do it. So we got to look at that, we got to look at that, and say it's enough, it's enough, and for the scam department.
Is there anyone else that has a comment for us this evening? Yes, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Detrick Jones, and I live at 2704 Point Court, Bowling Green. And the questions that I have are around traffic issues and the, I live in the Crossing area. And one in particular is Pasco and Scottsville. As we know, the holidays are coming up, and even when they're, even when it's not the holidays, it's a very congested area, and there's been a significant amount of accidents in that area. And what is starting to happen right there at that intersection, which is a major intersection right before you get to the interstate, oftentimes you can't get out even when the light turns green and people are taking chances. I have two daughters that I love very much, and it's getting to the point where people are on their phones, and they're crossing that intersection, and they're making a point to make their way out of there. And I know the accidents there have increased immensely in that, in that area. So are there any plans to try to rectify that by maybe putting in cameras or other turn signals, have that been looked at?
I want to bring some information to you, just since this is a new item that is brought up. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, of which the city and the county and the state are part, participate in reviewing accident data, and that section of, you're talking about on Scottsville Road, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, if the road has a number on it, like US 231 or Kentucky 234, even though it's a state or a federal highway, we don't really have any, the city itself doesn't make any improvements to that, but we get to make recommendations through that NPO program. And I don't know if the improvements that are already scheduled include all the way down to the Ford intersection or not. I know it does in front of the Scottsville Square subdivision, I mean, Shopping Center. But from Shive Lane to, I think that very intersection improvements are underway as far as acquiring property easements, and the plans are underway to get that done. Now, with the state, it takes a while, just like it does us, so I don't know when it'll be completed. But if your quest is for extra enforcement in that area with regard to traffic laws, we can certainly submit that to the police department as well.
I surely would appreciate it, sir.
Okay.
I do have one other, well, one other question. It's not really directly related to traffic itself, but the sidewalks, have there been any discussion about sidewalks? The population in Bowling Green is continuing to increase. People are walking along the roads more. It's kids are walking along the streets more, you see that more often. Is there a plan to have sidewalks or anything in the Bowling Green area?
Yes, sir, and you can, you can access that information on the city's website. If you go up and pull the pulldown menu in Public Works, and then the sidewalk plan is there. And although it's color-coded, and I can't tell what colors are, it tells you which side they're going to be on. But again, if there's a number on the highway, like US 231, it would be the state's responsibility to construct them if there's not any there. And I don't recall, Greg, do you recall if there's any sidewalks as part of that construction that they're going to do?
There's not, there's some crossings of Scottsville Road, marked crossing and pedestrian lanes.
That's right, because it's considered a, not an urban street because of the, it has the shoulders rather than the curbs and gutters, right? Okay. So not on Scottsville Road that I know of.
And the city's been engaged in, in a very, very active and forthcoming sidewalk construction program for the last several years. I don't know, Kevin, how many miles have we built?
About ten years ago, just to give a, we started a sidewalk program to fill in the holes where there are no sidewalks and to build complete sidewalks. We put about $500,000 a year for the last, how many years, Kate, ten? Ten years, so we've made a major commitment to that, and that'll continue to go on every year. And the problem is, we have millions of dollars of need because there was a period of time in our community in which sidewalks weren't built. It was, people wanted to have this rural feeling, so they didn't build sidewalks in subdivisions. Now, everybody wants a sidewalk, and so we have this big hole. And we prioritize those every, every year and put the money to do a good bit. Greg, do you know how many miles we did over the, over the ten-year period? Would you have that number? Or Kate?
I don't, Kevin, it's probably, probably ten.
It's over fourteen miles.
Fourteen miles.
Sounds about right. We've got several, again, the ones I'm talking about today. And we look at the prioritization every year. We rerun that model constantly, if need be, and look at places like, you mentioned Pasco, I think. A lot of people travel Pasco and walk, and so certainly that's on the radar, too, so.
You just tell us that we're doing the right thing. It's just, it's going to take longer and more money than we have in right now, but we're working on the problem.
I can say I've been, I've been in the Bowling Green area now, my wife and two kids, and we've been here, and we've seen some improvement, so. But we've also seen in just these few years that the population is growing pretty fast, and it's, Bowling Green is starting to boom right now. So there's a lot of walking and it's a lot of biking going on right now, and that was just one of our concerns.
Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I'm sorry.
Your concern for sidewalks, are they within your subdivision? Or your main concern is out on Scottsville Road, US 231? Where do you live?
I live in the Crossings, it's right off of Pasco, down right behind the Ford dealership. There's some apartments back there, but there's also homes back there. So my wife and I live in that area. Now, there are sidewalks in my community, but as you go out of the community and get closer to Scottsville, that's when you start seeing the pedestrians walking along Scottsville or on Pasco and on the, I think, call them access roads. I mean, you know, it's just getting to the point where, and I, I just assume it would get worse once the holidays start, which we, you know, we're pretty used to that, you just have to be aware. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Just a reminder, our next scheduled meeting is November 21st, 2017. Thank you for attending.